Our microphone's not working the best, so apologize for last week when a lot of you put here. Normally, a lot of people don't want to hear what we have to say, so.
No, we're here, we want to hear you, buddy.
I understand that. Good morning, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order, but if any, please call the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here. We always start our meeting with a prayer of the belief that I would want to lead us through this.
Father, we've joined together to consider the business of the county. We ask your guidance in what we consider and how we make the decisions, and we do the best for the people of this county. We ask your blessing upon the people of the county, the staff and the families that are part of the county that serve those people. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we consider difficult issues, and help us to do the best possible job. As we look around the world, we make special note of the coronavirus and what's going on, and we ask that you intervene in that situation and help those of China and elsewhere dealing. We ask all of its high name.
Amen.
Let the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the board, you'll see the day's agenda. Need approval, today's agenda.
So moved.
The items on this. All in favor of the motions, give us a sign. Motion carries. January 16th, 2020, regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Any discussion on them? All in favor of the motions, give us a sign.
Aye.
All in favor of the sign, motion carries. Review of commissioners' mileage and expense sheets going around the dais this morning. If there's anything that feels wrong, please bring it before the board this morning. Bring us down to elected official department head updates, but any elected official department heads like to give us an update this morning.
I ask that you should go first. Mrs. Spencer, County Clerk, if anybody doesn't know, recognize who I am, and I appear to officially introduce you to my new chief, Deputy Hastings Sterns. She started officially just this past Monday. I know a lot of you knew that Amy was going to be joining our office. She actually really understands how many issues that registered to these offices most recently. So pleased to have her join our ranks. We had so many speculations in my office and less than here, and so this is much reason for good news that I have to share, so I'll just let you, maybe, first get up.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Thanks. And just a really quick update about the March 10th primary. All of your clerks in your jurisdictions are very busy right now. They're doing the absent voter applications, the ballots are available for distribution for AB voters, and we have just been seeing, our door's just been revolving, getting supplies out to the clerks and refilling orders for them. So I look at that as a very positive thing. I would like to see them very good. If you hear of that in your jurisdiction, that's what's going on. Any questions for Amy or your neighbors?
Whether the absentee ballots are available.
Right now.
Right now.
So any citizen that would like to, obviously, even AB ballot, they may use, with the changes in the law, it was only three. Anybody can receive an AB ballot, they just have to fill in an application, and then those are processed at the local jurisdiction, either their city or their township clerk, and ballots are available. And I hear that even in one township, not only did the citizen fill out their application and get their ballot, they already brought it back, and those are stored under guard, basically, in the local precincts until election day. Nothing is, nothing is openly got until the day of the election. And I'd like to go another really quick update. A number of our precincts are adding absent voter counting boards, which are basically an additional precinct at their place, and those are specifically designed to handle AB ballots. The folks working in that precinct are sequestered, detabulated, and that is what they do on the process of the AB ballots. That's really been something that the Bureau of Election and Transit are suggesting, recommending, and providing for, so that everybody can wrap up their license timely and get results after the polls close. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other elected official department heads like to give us an update this morning?
Good morning, everybody. The time of the meeting in Lansing in regards to that joint task force that the governor puts together, it was pretty interesting. Most interesting thing is, is they have drafted bills, this is going to happen. They didn't tell us what were they going to implement or which ones they were. Some people asked, how's it going to be funded? It's an answer. I think it's worth noting that you guys go your meetings through the commercial association and everything, that there should be people from this task force there to reach, and that's what they told us was going to happen. Without talking to Sheriff too, the city, the Sheriff's Association meetings. Hopefully, they start telling us which one's coming, and they have a way to fund it, because some of the stuff is going to either be funded at the state level, or hopefully, it's going to run a county to fund itself. Thank you.
Morning. I'm not going to go through the stats, because I know you've got a big agenda, but I did because of timing wise, I would ask that for prayers. Shannon, Deputy Shannon Beal that's with us has been on the kidney transplant list for over a year now, a young lady. We just found out that she has a match, so she's actually going in for a new kidney on Wednesday, so super excited. That poor girl has just been through heck, so she goes in Wednesday morning at Henry Ford, so she's going to be off for a few months, but just prayers for everybody, because that girl's been a rock star, and it's kind of an inspiration to the department. So any prayers, we appreciate it. Thank you. Dave?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Dave.
Just want to, congratulations, by the way, that's nice. I just want to throw something out real quick. In an effort to reduce some return adoptions that, you know, we normally get, people, a lot of times, they come there and they get that quick, you know, oh, I want to do this now, kind of thing. I've implemented a new adoption application everywhere I'm doing, and right on the application it says that, you know, we'll get back to them in two or three days, so we're hoping that that'll eliminate, you know, that impulse kind of adoption. And we also have on here, because a lot of times people bring back an animal that, you know, they get home and they're in an apartment or something, their landlord says, no, you can't have it, so we make that, if they are in situations like that, bring in proof that it's okay with their landlord that they have an animal. So we're trying to eliminate some of that. And also, just so you know, that we've been really busy here the last couple of weeks. A week and a half ago, St. Clair County had another hoarding case. She's had some crazy problems over there, but she had one that they took between forty and dogs out of one home. So we took ten of them from St. Clair County to help them out, and we've adapted almost all of those already. And the other day, Detroit was reaching out, because Detroit is just euthanizing an ungodly number of animals, so we went and took seven dogs and a cat from them yesterday. So it's not a lot, but it's a little bit of help. We had the space, it makes us a little bit here, but our adoption rates, that Facebook page has just gone through the roof with us, and our foot traffic and adoptions have gone through the roof, and so we're doing animals like crazy. So if we can help out someday, we may need the help, so we will do. And I'll be back in a couple of weeks, we'll do our annual report for you guys. Couple other ideas I wanted to, we'll be with you guys on the show. Any other questions?
Comment, I have to be talking to a local vet, and he was very complimentary of what you're doing.
We've been, we've been really working a lot more with some of our local vets, rescues, and things right now are going really well. I got, my staff right now is, I mean, it's the best expanding, and it's, I think they're going pretty good, so it's good. Thanks, guys.
Any other elected officials, department? Any questions?
Good morning, everybody. Just wanted to speak briefly about mental health first aid. The county press gave us a nice article on our youth program, and then this Sunday, a very comprehensive editorial on the importance of mental health first aid, so I'd invite all of you, and all of you, to sign up for one of our mental health first aid courses. It's invaluable information in helping loved ones, friends, acquaintances get the help they need in the event of a mental health crisis or emergencies.
Thank you.
Russ Adams, LePere County EMS. Two quick things to bring to your attention. One, my board has decided to move their monthly meetings. Our board meetings are now the third Tuesday of every month, so there is no longer a conflict between the power two boards, should be interested in that. That was one item. And the second item, I've been working with the sheriff's department to identify any place our agencies overlap, and focus on what we're calling a cost neutral solution. So if we're transporting prisoners from the jail for medical care, if that prisoner is still in the sentencing fashion, that's their personal responsibility for that care and treatment, but if they've been sentenced or adjourned and they're the county's responsibility, we're creating a way to waive those fees, so that it isn't kind of us assessing a fee internally against tax-supported agencies. So we're continuing to do that as an administration with the direction of my board, and making sure that tax-funded entities within our county are not being assessed or coming to a cost neutral solution. So, thank you. Any questions on those?
The third Tuesday, what time and what place?
9:00 AM at our building, at the administrative building. 9:00 AM on the third Tuesday.
Any other elected official department heads like to give us an update this morning? Here and see no one else, I'll close elected official department head updates. Bring this down to the first public time. As you know, all know, public times are limited to three minutes. Board doesn't interact with the public. They don't answer questions, and we don't respond to questions, so I guess that's the same. Who would like to address this board during the first public time?
Good morning, commissioners. How are you this morning? My name is Anna Lerm. I work with the LePere County Health Department. I sit on the orderly council board at this moment. I also sit in the senior board. I presented a letter of interest to the, on the VAAA board as well, and also the VAAA advisory board. I have been informed that at this point in time, a response to me is quite up in the air. Apparently, there's some conflict of interest on both sides, whether it's the board or the advisory board, simply because I'm employed with the LePere County Health Department. I've gone through this with the gentleman before in regards to the senior advisory board. I don't see the conflict of interest, so if someone is willing to point it out to me at the next project time, I would appreciate it. The first one would be, I wasn't presented with a conflict of interest with the advisory. However, the one that I choose was the board, and that presents a conflict of interest because I'm employed and I would be voting, if I voted against, money's coming into the health department. I can always extend the voice from voting. My concern at this point in time is the seniors of our county. That is my concern, and that is who I advocate for, not the health department as a whole, whether it's, whatever it may be. It is my seniors. We have programs in place for our youth and our infants, and that's awesome, because they're our future leaders. However, let us keep in mind that we are all here and have the services that we have because of all of us that are already seniors, have been and have worked all our lives. Now we need someone to advocate for these individuals in our community. Thank you so very much.
Anybody else like to address this board during the first public time this morning?
Jan Watson, Mayfield Township. My first thought today was about coming was why bother? After sitting through last week's meeting, I kind of think I know where this Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution is headed. But then I decided I needed to come today so that you know that not everybody in this county agrees with that resolution. I've had a number of calls, I've seen a number of people who said, I know, thank you, that's enough. So what I'm thinking here is, somebody pulls off a resolution off a Facebook page, and they plop it in front of the commissioner, and the commissioner brings it here, and you hear a few public comments, and, you know, what I consider meaningful discussion with your residents, your constituents, and then from that committee, and it goes to the full court. But this is a non-binding resolution, so maybe it doesn't warrant much kind of thought. Even Commissioner Miller mentioned last week, it's just words. I personally would like to see the federal government or the state government consider passing some common sense gun laws, ones that keep guns out of the games of people who are a danger to themselves or others. Even the founder of the Facebook page, the Facebook page is called Michigan Four-Two-A Sanctuary Counties, he supports, I'm assuming it's a he, supports some gun restrictions. He's quoted as saying, nobody is going to be against a common sense idea like that. So it sounds like maybe we're acting out of fear, fear that they're going to take the guns away. States that have enacted red flag laws have not found that. The red flag laws have been upheld, and people have not had, other than the people who should not have guns, people have not had their guns taken away. So now we've spent plenty of time and effort to pass a resolution that's not legally binding. I'm questioning why? Why not spend your valuable time on things that really matter, not on things that are based on what if? Maybe you could look into solutions for fixing our crumbling roads and infrastructure, or help solve our homeless problem, finding funding to improve services for the residents of our county? Maybe we could get more involved in the census. Census is coming up in three months, and I've seen almost nothing. We want a good count of LePere County citizens to be seeing funding for programs. We need to get with it. Ten years ago, and I just talked to Mary this morning, we had a census committee, she was working on it, there were all sorts of town halls, and she went to every meeting possible to let people know about the census. I've seen a few posters at the library. There isn't even anything in your brochure back upstairs. The other thing you could be doing is maybe hosting some town halls, where you can listen to your constituents, so they can tell you what they would like you to do. This is a sad day. I just hope that common sense gun laws eventually are enacted in Michigan before we face a horrible tragedy in one of our neighborhoods, one of our churches, or one of our schools. This resolution does nothing but worth those efforts, and I'm sorry to see what I expect ahead.
If I may, I'm among the members of the commission. Gordy Street, I'm representing the LePere County Tea Party. I spoke last night. I think what you're doing is very, very important. The reaffirmation of our constitutional right is, is very important. It's language that tells us what our elected officials are doing. To address the last comments this made, I'm announcing, and I had announced last time, that we are having a Tea Party meeting on February 18th. Our organization is founded on the principles of educational and informational things important to the county. Chief, agenda item on that, on that meeting will be the resolution that you're proposing today, among other issues dealing with guns, and the Second Amendment, and issues dealing with the law enforcement. We will have a panel, invited members of this commission who participate in the panel. We also have invited the LePere County Sheriff and the LePere County Prosecutor, who have agreed to attend. I've talked to Senator Ted Daly, I've talked to Representative Gary Howe. Senator Daly will be there a little bit late, but we have to send the representative here, and I'm sure that Representative Howe will be there. So we will have, and I believe that Harry Akers will be on that panel, one of the presenters of the resolution today. So to address the issues as to guns, operations, safety, issues dealing with the rights of citizens, to defend themselves, that all these issues will be addressed in the public, and I think that it would mean the participation of some members of this commission, among all those that I have named, and will, will address the issues raised by the citizens. So that's February 18th, that will be at Mayfield Township Hall at 7:00.
At the Sports Club?
Not at the Sports Club, because the archery people, I don't want you to avoid, you know, and we don't want to go zeros, but that is really the rules. So they had, there was a conflict, so we had to move it back, and we hope that the Town, Mayfield Township Hall, it probably will be standing room only, but it's an important issue, and we want to address all the concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just prior to note, I think you're looking much better, and I'm quickly covered.
William Hamilton, LePere Township. Want to speak in support of the two-way resolution, I spoke last week as well. This two-way resolution is important, in my opinion, to reaffirm our rights, shows our citizens, but you're voting for it, that you reaffirm our rights. Second Amendment was not written because of the fear we're coming, it was against government tyranny, it was for self-defense. I hear people speak about needing more common sense gun control laws as well. Illinois has those, look at the disaster that Chicago has, record murders for the last two years at least. But they have strong gun control laws, but it didn't stop those criminals, did it? Now, laws don't stop criminals. All these laws do is stop lawful people like me and many others in this room, and help the public from being able to exercise their right to self-defense. It just restricts the law-abiding. If people want to commit evil act, whether it be with a gun, they can do it with knives, they've done it with cars, New York City had an attack, or a guy ran down the sidewalk with a van. If people want to do evil, they're going to find a way to do it. It doesn't matter. What we have in this country, the state, is a morality problem. People just don't seem to have value for human life anymore, and it's up to the law-abiding citizen to make sure that we have a way to equalize that and take out those bad guys we're leading to. Happened in Texas recently, some guy was going to shoot people in a church, a good guy with a gun luckily was there and took the guy down before he could hurt many people. So we don't have a gun problem in this country, we don't have a gun control problem, we have a morality problem. And I would like to see our rights reaffirmed by this board, state level and federal level. Thank you.
Harry?
Harry Akers, LePere Township. I just wanted to refute something that was said a moment ago about the people that run the Michigan Two Way Sanctuary County website, or not website, I'm sorry, Facebook page. She had mentioned that they had said all these things that were supporting reasonable gun control laws. It's not true. I just asked her who it was that she spoke to about that, she said she didn't know who runs the Facebook page. It's Jeff Fuss, and it's a guy that goes by Trucker Randy Bishop, who has a radio show in Sheboygan, an conservative radio show, and so what you heard is false.
What else would like to address this board this morning?
Dean Craig, Arcadia Township. I've been carrying a concealed firearm legally in the state of Michigan since the mid-eighties. Back then, I had to get special permission, because the law didn't allow an ordinary citizen that didn't have connections with someone in the government to get their permit. So in 2001, our laws were changed. It took a long time to get that to happen. 1927 is when the law that restricted concealed carry in Michigan went into effect, to make it legal to conceal a firearm, although in Michigan, it's always been legal to open carry a firearm, and that's constitutional carry, as we refer to it in the state. The biggest problem I have with what I've heard this morning is people keep throwing out the words "common sense." And I think actually, in addition to the morality of our country, the other problem we have in this country is a lack of common sense. The laws that we have passed since 1927 against carrying concealed firearm, or any firearm in the state of Michigan, may have seemed like common sense, and may have seemed like they solved a problem at the time that everyone agreed through a majority to go by those rules, to pass those rules, to sign them into, into law. But I don't know if you watched the news last night, I don't have the glasses, but our common sense governor said this last night. For those of you who want to keep playing games, I'm going to press on without you, in other words, your permission. And I'm going to use the power of my office to do whatever I want, and I'm going to do what I said I was going to do. Because for me, Michigan, and for Michigan, impatience is a virtue. This was her press conference last night, her State of the State. Just a few months ago, she announced in another press conference that she supports red flag laws that are currently proposed before the state. She would require law enforcement to take a firearm if anyone says anything bad about them. She also said, and I quote, restrictions or bans on assault rifles is something that she supports. She says, I think something that does not go against a Second Amendment hunter's rights, I don't think the Second Amendment had anything to do with hunting, would all of you agree? There's not much common sense in this statement, but it says, she goes on to say, it simply says that your ability to kill lots of people in a short period of time is what we're going to try to restrain. Well, I'm sorry, but the most common rifle in America is what she's talking about banning. She's also wanting to ban and tell us how many bullets we can carry in a gun. Most guns that I know people that carry today would be made illegal under her proposed laws. There's nothing common sense about any of that. Telling me how many bullets I'll need to defend, however many people I need to defend against, doesn't make much sense to me. So I reaffirm my support for this resolution that I made last week, but I also want to add one thing, because I spoke before you did the agenda, and as much as I respect Well, I'm sorry, but the most common rifle in America is what she's talking about banning. She's also wanting to ban and tell us how many bullets we can carry in a gun. Most guns that I know people that carry today would be made illegal under her proposed laws. There's nothing common sense about any of that. Telling me how many bullets I'll need to defend however many people I need to defend against doesn't make much sense to me. So I reaffirm my support for this resolution that I made last week. But I also want to add one thing, because I spoke before you did the addendum. And as much as I respect the attempt to appease everyone that's concerned about the wording of the Second Amendment resolution we had, you added a clause that specifies that this sanctuary county would be defined as a place for the refuge of lawful gun owners, which means you're taking what the Second Amendment means and what the Constitution means and what our God-given rights mean, and you're reducing them to man-made laws again. And I am against adding that, addendums to the resolution. I think it stands to say what it was intended to say and that it would do what it needs to do without that additional statement.
Would anyone else like to address this board this morning? It seems I want to close the first public time. Thank you to everyone that spoke. Emergency management renewal of NICS SL.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move with those questions. Are there any significant changes?
Mary?
No, no changes at all, just going to extend it for another year.
Thank you for your support. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say a aye. Motion carries. Brings down to resolution, Second Amendment, thank where it counts.
I make a motion to move as originally written.
Motion for discussion. I have a motion in support. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say a aye. Motion carries. Brings down to resolution, Second Amendment, thank where it counts.
I make a motion to move as originally written.
Motion for discussion. One amendment, because something happened last week.
I was going to say, point of order was last week, the board voted unanimously to move to this, buy into this vote as amended.
It's been amended this way, so I'm supporting that. I didn't put anything.
It would really be really helpful.
There was a issue with transcards, I'm not working, so that's okay. But we can have it now.
Well, I wasn't here last week, I didn't watch the, I didn't watch the video, because it did appear to me that that was what happened, was it was amended and it was moved this way. And then, I understand there were some problems with the communication of that, understandably. I think the proper way to do it now would be, and there is a motion on the floor, if that motion does not get supported, then certainly someone could make the motion to move the resolution as amended last week.
I'll support it.
Well, technically, you can't support unless you step down from the chair. That's the chair.
All we're trying to do is clean this up.
I understand, I think the cleanest way of doing that, and I'm only going out of what came out of last week's meeting, the cleanest way to do that would be to move the motion as it was amended.
First.
So in that case, I will move the amended resolution as drafted in this document.
Really, it's improved the last week's meeting.
I'll move that forward.
Prayer to information. This never got to the board this morning. State made, so it never got to the agenda. What I wanted to do was, to get the agenda going, which was already determined, was to actually put the original packet in, have that brought to the board, support it, then you could re-amend it so we could actually clean this up.
That's what it's done right now. It's just presented as amended last week.
Well, we're going to have to take a vote on it amendment.
No, we did that last week. His motion now.
Only thing we did last week for the whole thing, he brought that particular wording up, we moved it to this week's debate.
Moved the motions and moved here. He's just made a motion now, after Rick's right.
So that's what I want to vote on, this one.
Right, so he just made a motion now for this amendment with that change from last week. I just supported that motion.
Okay. So we're going to have to vote on that motion. Get a second for that motion. You say. All in favor of that motion, say a aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, so we're going to now vote on this one.
No, you just voted on the motion as amended, which was the, what, at this point in time, although I think the intent of what came out of the commission last week, from what I saw on videotape, that's what we just did. But at this point in time, quite frankly, last week, you set aside, and you had a motion to move the unamended resolution, which did not get supported, and then you had a motion to move it as amended. It did get supported and voted on and passed, so now that resolution is in effect, however, another point of order. I believe we need to take a roll call because it is a resolution.
Yeah, that's correct.
And this is committed to the whole, per full board.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Schleter?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
No.
Chairman.
Mr. Royce. Okay. She wants my vote. Because of the Second Amendment, as strong as I believe in the Second Amendment, I'm going to have a hard time voting against this amendment. I have to sign it anyway if I vote against it, so. I'm in support of the original motion, the original resolution. I'm going to tell everybody in this room that, and I have been from the beginning. But this new one, I'm against the new wording in this particular resolution. So it leaves me to no choice but to vote against this amended resolution. Tough thing for me to have to do, but. Well, the resolution passes anyway.
Many years ago, when we had a resolution, I said exactly what you said.
I understand, I understand the kickback you got from it. I want everybody out there to realize what I just did, why I did it. There's another case that will make another law against something that I don't believe.
I've always got the same opinion as you, but most of the areas, sanctuary county, they vote. Maybe what we've got to do is let people know that you want to end up like you did the other night, and say you're going to do it the way you want to do it. That's exactly what happened in Virginia. They had a bunch of people still go down there, they had a bunch of people go down there, they still said we're good for what we're doing. We're three steps away from that position right now. Keep that in mind when you hear people talk. This is what they're going for, and they can make it sound as good as they want, but once it's gone, they take it away from you, and you're not getting it back. That's my opinion.
Moving on. I want to thank everybody for their participation in this. We'll be talking to you again at the Tea Party meeting and at the Sportsman's Club. Well, not Sportsman's Club, Sportsman's Club, I mean, yeah. I haven't been a member of the Sportsman's Club, I've been for a long time. So, saying that, moving on.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I would move motions five through four on page one.
All in favor, say a aye.
Quick question. On the first motion, I wonder, there's no description of the grant. And just for clarity, I wonder if we could, maybe a good idea to add I-69 corridor development court.
As I read that, it took me a long time to remember who I was referring to. I have no issue with that.
Board, get that changed.
I-69 corridor development court.
So what the change, you got a vote still, clerk? All right, all in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say a aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move motions five through 11 on page two.
In a motion in support, any more discussion? All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say a aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I would move motions 12 through 14 on page three.
Any discussion? Motion in support, all in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say a aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will move the county's audit motion and the road commission's audit motion with the controller's signature.
All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
We spent $3,156,594.22 in taxpayer dollars this morning. Moving on, move on to the second public time. I'd like to address this board during the second public time this morning. Harry?
Again, Harry Akerich, Pierre Township. I want to thank Mr. Roy for your leadership of the commission and Rick Warren for your help in bringing this forward. I'm disappointed in the wording that you added for the reasons that were brought out earlier. Those are supposed to be our God-given rights. The Constitution doesn't put those as under it. It says, it affirms, it's over them. So you have just put our God-given rights under law, and that's wrong. And I hope that you feel it as you go forward, because it's wrong, you shouldn't be doing that. So that's my two cents. But thank you for passing the resolution so that we can be, I think it sends a good signal to the governor and to the legislators that we are against them major laws. So, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this board this morning?
Well, thanks to boards for passing the two-way resolution. I appreciate that. With Harry, the place in our rights, this resolution, hello for God-given laws. So I would like to just suggest to the board to make an amendment to put it back to the original wording, be considered at some point in the future. But thank you for reaffirming our support for the Second Amendment.
Anybody else like to speak to the board during the second public time this morning?
This is a little bit of show and tell, commissioners. I just want to point out that personally, I have nothing against the Health Department at all. I love what I do, and that's separate from it because I work with the senior, and I love it. I get to see what's going on on the ground floor. And that's why I like to be part of committees and boards and such, to bring that information to those folks that are, you know, up here in that manage us, in other words. I have worked with the Health Department for six years, I've been five years in the senior program. For the last three years, I've been working with this computer, as you can see. Here are the little nuts, or bolts, whatever you want to call it, screws, that hold it together. A week ago, this thing went haywire. I have no, I have maybe three, six, nine, ten, twelve, about 12 keys that have no letters on them. I use it to type, to do my reports, to make my suggestions, to do my assessments, the assessments that matter to these seniors. It must be correct, it must be correct. I know the keys because I know the keys. That's how I print my reports. We have a time limit on our reports if they have to be done and turned into B AAA. I've gone to my superior, my direct superior, I told him, I says, this week, which was three weeks ago, I have eight reports, eight assessments, first-time assessments, put in the computer. Those take an average of three hours. Some of those questions on there don't need to be on there. And hopefully, if I am fortunate enough to be on one of these boards, I can make a change in regards to that, hopefully. I'm only one person, but I'm willing to give it a try. I've gone to my superior, like I said, two weeks, three weeks ago, I had 16, 18 reports to do, 14, even 14 and 17 to do. And I said to him, this is not operating properly. It had crashed, there was no working with it. He looked at me, he said, I said, if I don't get them done, I'm going to be late, that's going to reflect on me as being a poor worker, it's going to reflect on the department as not doing our job. I'm going to be late with these reports. He says, oh, well, so you'll be late. I says, wrong answer. That is not the answer I wanted to hear. I wanted to hear something, we will do something about it. What's happening is this, this computer belongs to B AAA. I use it on LaPierre County, in LaPierre County building. B AAA says, that's not our responsibility. Health Department tells me, that's not our responsibility. So it's no one's responsibility. I've, like I said, I've gone to my superior, his superior, I've gone to B AAA, talked with the CEO, getting nowhere. Now, I put it before you gentlemen, and Ms. Jarvis, which of course obviously is not here today, would you be pleased working in a situation like this where you do not have the appropriate equipment to do what you need to do to provide, make certain that the services you need to provide for these vulnerable seniors is done and is correct and in a timely fashion? I have a backlog of 30 cases that need to, we need to go out in the field, assess these families, and say, yes, we can help you with these services. We have seniors that are bed bound, can't get up, they need transportation to their medical appointments. We can't do that. So it's very important and it's imperative to have working equipment. Now, I present this to you gentlemen, and maybe between all of you, you can come with a solution or a suggestion. Who do I go to next to get a working piece of equipment? I've been working with this for like three years already. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board this morning during the second public time?
Senator Mark Goodwin, I'm here today in support of the Second Amendment Sanctuary. I'd just like to say that I do support it as originally worded. I think that- I think that the amendment that you passed basically nullifies it because it's, oh, we're going to affirm our God-given rights under the law as long as we don't break laws. Because if it's under the law, then those are also, those are also laws, so the wording kind of nullifies the whole of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this board this morning during the second public time? During the same, I want to close the second public time. Guess we'll, I'll read commissioner reports. Go ahead. I don't want to hear any big stump issues.
Well, it's going to have to be for a moment because I do want to make something clear. Okay, I understand the concerns out there. Here's what's really frustrating me. I said, during the beginning of this process, we did all the amendments, however this thing is worded, I'm going to support it because I support Second Amendment rights. I do. And however the board feels comfortable doing it, I would do it. And then we have two people who voted against it, which I understand your reason going against it. I wish I would have known that the word lawful would cause so much issue because I would have voted to remove it. And in fact, I'm considering right now, putting a motion of reconsider, because I did vote yes, so I can do that, on this and removing the word lawful so that we can get this done because I want to pass this unanimously. Because I know everyone in here wants to. So, it kind of frustrated me that this all happened this way. I understand the reasoning that people were upset about it. I understand the word lawful is a block issue, just like the word sanctuary was a block issue. Let's get past all these blocked issues, okay? If the word, if we remove the word lawful, so it doesn't put it under the word of law, to put it under the constitutional law and the God-given right, then that's fine with me. Because the intent will still be there, then no one can go back and say, well, he's a Second Amendment supporter, but not really a Second Amendment supporter. I don't want any of that coming out of this commission today. Because I know each and every person up here supports the Second Amendment and supports what this is all about. And I know everyone in here is ready to fight Governor Whitmer if she pulls out some of the crap that she was talking about last night in the State of the State of Texas. So, I guess I was sitting here, my blood was boiling just a little bit when all this was going on. So, if it means that we remove the word lawful and we get a unanimous pass to say to the governor that LaPierre County unanimously supports Second Amendment rights and it defines the word sanctuary, so there's no question of sanctuary, then that's what I'm going to do. So, what I will say right now is I will make a motion to reconsider the resolution passed, being as I was one of the supporters, that would then put it at a three-three split so we can reopen it for discussion. So, that's what I would do right now.
Motion debated at this point? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side?
Aye.
Motion. Motion. Three-three?
Three-three.
Although Linda would have voted for it, but she's not here.
Well, I guess, all right, we love it. It is what it is. What I will say is maybe next week. I'll bring it up next week. If it takes for women that word lawful to get unanimous support of this commission, I will do it. Because, to be quite honest with you, I'm sick of worrying about this whole resolution. And I do want to say one more thing, though. Thank you all for coming out. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the public support. Secondly, I want to assure everybody that I am committed to doing more than just this resolution when this is all going on. I have been looking for funding sources. I have been looking for more public commitment and more public comment into the systems of government. And leaving, I actually have been finding students to work on the census. So, I can assure you as a commissioner that all my time has not been spent on the Second Amendment resolution. But as I said, this has been a very frustrating process. Maybe next week we'll change it. I hope that it's clear to everybody that I am not some sort of havesy Second Amendment supporter, just because I support this resolution. I supported the original amendment because I thought there was no issues with it. I wish if there was an issue, we would have brought it up during discussion, but it wasn't, and we had the final vote. So, that's all I will say at this point.
What do you have to say?
I probably won't say this right, but this is one of those issues where I don't feel to be happy with a whole bunch of people on one end or the other end. I do support the Second Amendment. I want to protect it, make sure that what I consider a points assault don't occur that politically change the rights of people to have guns and protect themselves. On the other hand, I took an oath to become a county commissioner and support the Constitution. And part of that in a democracy is that you have to follow the law. And so, that's why I support having the idea of lawful as part of this because without that, the definition of sanctuary, particularly as it's being used by some people and some particularly cities in terms of illegal immigration, carries for me a very, very undemocratic perspective on what you can do when you have a personal feeling on something by not following the law. I'm comfortable supporting the resolution as it is. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what you have here is an example of a roomful of Second, not all of us, but majority of a roomful Second Amendment supporters who have a disagreement on a particular strategy to support and defend that particular amendment that we of our Bill of Rights, of our U.S. Constitution, that means a lot to all of us. The debate here is not over Second Amendment. The debate here is you have a lot of Second Amendment supporters that take great exception to the strategy of sanctuary cities. And I'm one of them. I do not believe taking a page out of the liberals' page book and going, well, they play that on immigration, so now let's go ahead and we'll play it on our gun rights. I think if our forefathers were here, they would take exception to using a strategy that I believe is a terrible slap in the face to the Constitution. And I described that last week, that our forefathers put in place checks and balances in three separate but equal government, three branches of government. Nowhere in there is it said, you don't like the law that passed, I don't like the law that passed, so we're not going to abide by it. It's not what our framers said. Our framers said the courts will make that determination. And therein lies our insistence on the word lawful. Because I'm not going to turn around, I'll, of course, I'm going to be unhappy when legislature makes laws that are unconstitutional, and that's happened throughout the history of our nation. And that will continue to happen throughout the history of our nation. And that's why there's that third branch of government, that's a check and a balance to correct it, not for us to start creating lawlessness and saying, we're going to be the ones to decide. That I blame saw, as I mentioned last week, if I got to choose, and this particular strategy forces good Second Amendment defenders to choose between being a Second Amendment supporter or a constitutionalist. I'll defend the Constitution every day first because that's what I took an oath to when I raised my hand, to defend the Constitution. And sanctuary cities, sanctuary counties is not part of that Constitution. And I do believe that without you defining lawful, then you're turning around and saying, you're going to make that decision as individuals. And that starts us down the path of lawlessness. So, if you take those words out, to my good commissioner at the end there, you're still not going to have a unanimous. Because there's no way I would support sanctuary that was not defined because then that just infers lawlessness. That's a slap in the face of our forefathers. That's a slap in the face of the Constitution. That's my personal feelings.
Rick? I don't want to put you on the spot, Scott, if you're trying to, but if all of a sudden that person last night says, this is the way it's going to be, and you can no longer walk through this building with your rifle on or your pistol to protect people inside this building, how are you going to protect them? You're going to leave your pistol out in the car, and then you're going to come in here unarmed, and you got some nut grabs a machine gun, how are you going to defend us? Because your ammunition's out in the car. And the reason I point that out is because this isn't just Michigan, this wasn't Facebook, how is it Florida? This is Virginia. The governor wants to arrest him if he brings a gun inside his building. That's where we're at. That's what this is all about. The lawful word is saying, okay, she made it up, he made it up, he's got to abide by it. Then you took away my Constitution away. So, that's why I say remove it because it's wrong. And the sanctuary is a safety. It's not illegal. It pisses me off that they get to twist the word so that you and I are fighting over it. So, that's where we're at.
Mr. Camp? I'm passing. So, just to get your understanding. They can tell.
Well, let's just take a break from this for just a minute because I got some other things I want to talk about. We'll come back to it.
No, we're, no, we have something. We'll talk about it.
No, it is, Commissioner, with all due respect, it is my time.
You're right, I'm sorry. Let's take it off, so we can go somewhere else.
First off, I'm happy to let everybody know that I had a meeting with the census folks earlier this week, and they're going to be utilizing the new office at the Fair Ground to do all the regional training. So, I think that's kind of a positive thing that they're going to do their regional training here where they're coming. And they've locked up all eight days to do that. So, I think there's a lot more to come on that. It doesn't sound to me, like from everything I'm hearing from them, that it is going to be the same plan moving forward as they did last time. There's a lot of changes, but they are planning on coming here, they are planning on going on to different. So, update on that from what I know. Also, last week, I did go over and sit in the overflow room because I was only a half an hour early for the gravel pit issue. And the original Senate hearing room was full, and the overflow room was full, standing room only. It was extremely interesting, there were only, some of you might have seen, there were only two groups that talked, that spoke, Commissioner. The first group was the, was a gentleman from the aggregates, Michigan Aggregates Association, who took the majority of the time. And then Senator Daley and U.S. House Rep. Paul Mitchell spoke and did a very good job, I thought. And then it was all over. That was it, there were probably, my guess is probably over 50 people that had signed up to speak. Now, they did go back up yesterday, and they had two Senate hearings. I'm not sure I listened to them yesterday, but they did do that. The most interesting thing to me when I sat in that hearing was that they put a map up, and it was the aggregate industry gentleman that put the map up, that talked about all of the areas in the state of Michigan that were bones of contention, like Betamora. And there were a number of people there that were from all over the state. And the biggest thing they, and most of them were not like in our area, they were kind of, they were kind of scattered throughout. And the biggest thing they said was, and this proposal's being put up by a senator from Detroit, was the trucking, you know, the trucking cost to get that aggregate to basically the city. And, you know, when you start to look at things in the Lelandoff Peninsula and, you know, northern Michigan and even the U.P., their trucking cost, at least in my opinion, their trucking cost argument kind of fell apart. So, it really is horrible legislation. If anybody doesn't know what it does, what it does is it essentially allows if the aggregate companies say there's an immediate need, then they can mine, and it bypasses locals of, so the locals have nothing to say about it. So, I think it's horrible legislation. Everybody should be, everybody in this room should be contacting every senator and House rep that you can tell them not to proceed with that. So, if we had at least maybe a little bit of a time to breathe.
I don't need to open another.
This is, this is an interesting resolution that's been put together. And I have had, I mean, I've had hours of discussion on this resolution. I've had discussions with multiple sheriffs on this resolution, including ours. I've had resolution with, or discussion with multiple commissioners across the state on this resolution. I've had discussions with our county prosecutor on this resolution, multiple citizens, I've had lengthy discussions with Harry. By the way, Tim, I still have your level, if you wanted that. So, that's probably 20 years ago. The, there are, to me, first off, I don't think that the term sanctuary is used properly in this resolution. However, in saying that, I also understand that that ball is, that's the way it was packaged and that ball's rolling down the hill. And the point that is trying to be made here is that as a community, as a county, we support Second Amendment rights. And so, that's what this whole movement is about. And I think, quite frankly, you know, we could all argue about semantics and wording The, the, you know, I'm not sure, I don't like, as we've talked about before, I don't think the word declare is really necessary. Because we can't declare something that we already are. You know, we are covered by the Second Amendment. The state of Michigan does have a much stronger Second Amendment than the state of Virginia does, much stronger. So, I understand, as Harry and I have discussed multiple times, about, you know, there's always those laws that are being, that are trying to be introduced into Lansing that a lot of us do feel infringe on our Second Amendment rights. And that's what we're opposed to. So, in looking at the whole thing, I kind of, you know, okay, I can live with the Second Amendment wording. I understand it's a, it's there for impact, and that's what the resolution's trying to do. I can live with the word declare. I understand it's, you know, it's there for impact. When it comes down to lawful, what really bases, what really pushed me over there? If I talk to the sheriffs and I talk to multiple, and you ask the question, at least, and I can, and then Scott, if I'm talking on turn, let me know. But if you say, is this resolution going to change anything in the way that you enact the laws that are currently out of place? The answer's no. I believe that to be true, Scott, is that? So, getting a nod. And so, then you start to think about if you, if you don't put the term lawful in And so then you start to think about, if you, if you don't put the term lawful in there, are you talking about laws that, that are, that are on the books, aren't on the books? If one, what I think might be unconstitutional, and what Rick thinks might be unconstitutional are two different things. It's not up to us to decide it. It is, it is up to the courts to decide what's constitutional laws and what isn't. It's just the system, that's the system that we have in our country. And, and so I certainly, it, it's kind of a, the whole thing, and I, and I think this is the way my, the majority of my constituents feel, I think the majority of my constituents strongly support the Second Amendment. I think they also support the laws and the way that we form our laws in this country and the Constitution. So I would never want to be one to stand up and say that, that a felon should be able to walk out of Jackson Prison, walk across the street and buy a gun. I don't know anybody who would say that, I don't know one person. Now, if there's a law that you don't like, there's a process to challenge that law. And with all due respect, the last time I checked, the governor is not the one who makes a proclamation that then becomes law. That's just not the way it works in our society. So in looking at it, there are a lot of gives and takes, and what I try and do is I try and look at my constituents, and I understand you're going to have constituents way over here on an issue, and way over here on an issue, and then you're going to have all the folks in the middle. And I honestly think that the vast majority of my constituents support the Second Amendment and also support the laws that go along with it. So that's why, I guess, my rationale, and why I think it's important to have that in there. And again, I go back, I don't think our sheriffs swore an oath to uphold the Constitution and to uphold the laws of the state of Michigan, and to, to then ask, ask the sheriff, or to by commission, which, which quite frankly, we don't really have the right to do anyway, to tell the sheriff what to do one way or the other, it's not our job. But to put that into, into some sort of policy, to say, well, all of a sudden, if there is a new law passed, and somebody, not sure who, or how this is decided, but somebody just, all of a sudden says, oh, that's unconstitutional, you're not supposed to enforce it, well, that's not the way it works. If there's a law, it's unconstitutional, you challenge that law in court, the court and the law gets, hopefully if it is, gets, gets named that it's unconstitutional, and it's not in effect anymore. So I don't think anyone should be afraid of the term lawful. And I do, as I, again, as I said, I think that the purpose, I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't get so caught up in semantics across the board that we miss the purpose. The purpose here is, is that, as a community, we support the Second Amendment, and the, the catalyst that we're supporting that in is then, then call the sanctuary county, and we have support. I think, I think we really shouldn't lose, you know, lose that in the whole thing. It's not about, I mean, we're all going to, if you ever want, if you want everyone to unanimous, you know, it's like the budget. I always say, the budget's easy to solve, as long as I can get three commissioners to agree with me. That's the hard part. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't think that it's ever going to be a unanimous decision, no matter what magic language you come up with, I think your amendment was reasonable, and that's why I supported it. So I guess that's all I have to say, which was more than I was defending.
Hopefully.
As long as I get a follow-up after that.
You can follow up, but you're talking about lawful, and you're saying that the state of Michigan, our Constitution is good, right? I'm telling you right now, in Virginia, when you have three parties together, and they say this is the law for that state, their state capital, the sheriff can't walk in the building with his gun. That's today. That's done something in the future, and that's something we're talking about, it's not a fear, it's reality. And so reality is what I'm talking about today. So when we say lawful, soon as the governor and the three, two other parties get together and make that interstate lawful, then he has to abide by that. Then I get back to you, how are you going to protect me when your gun's in the parking lot, and a guy with a machine gun's inside the building, that you just said was a safe haven for everybody who doesn't carry a gun? Can't protect him. So I, and we're for lawful for that, because it's a constitutional right.
Hold on, hold on, this is Commissioner time. We let you speak, it's his turn to speak.
And I only said that because you said lawful, and I have a good Constitution in this state, but that doesn't mean that three parties, three different divisions can't change that on us, because look what's happening to our president today. Right now, as we speak, no proof, no nothing, I just accused you of something, so you've got to be guilty and get out of there. One party, one group, who says that he isn't above the law, but they are, and that's what happens, and that's what we're saying. Lawful, depending on how you're looking at it, if it's somebody that's always doing the law, then we're going to stand up for our constitutional right. That's why I like, we're lawful.
You're ignoring a couple things. Number one, again, we're not Virginia. We're not Virginia. Read, read the two state constitutions. You've got to do that.
The only thing good about Virginia is the governor's only limited to one term.
But, you know, the other thing, and you, you know, when you look and you say, you know, and I, I agree what's going on in Washington, but the fact of the matter is, you know, do you think, you, is there, everybody who thinks the Senate is going to vote to impeach the president, please raise your hand. I agree, it's not going to happen. So I get it, you know, that in that case, and I, not to, not to belabor partisan politics, but in that place, that's what they're doing. I get, I agree with you 100%, you know. In the state of Michigan, if they enact a law, if, if any party, I don't care which one, gets control of, of all three branches of government and passes a law, then that is, if that law is unconstitutional, then that is, by our system, we challenge that law and force it to be unconstitutional. It has happened many, many times. I understand people's fears.
That's, that's the system we live in.
And can I just add one quick thing? First off, I appreciate all the comments about the initial wording. I understand this is being.
This is the first time we've had this discussion about that wording.
Exactly, no. And what I would, what I would say is, if anyone wants an example of what happens with laws and gun laws and everything, instead of looking at Virginia, because that's a bit of a different case, look at Washington State. Washington State, like, in 2018, passed the red flag law through their, through their Constitution via voter ballot, okay? It all got approved, it all got passed, and it was enacted. However, the sheriffs in all but, I think, two counties said they're not going to enforce it until it's done going through the courts. The court case is currently ongoing, and it's going to be going up the court system, likely to the Supreme Court. So even if something happens in Michigan, where, let's say Governor Whitmer makes the declaration, the sheriff can still say, we're not going to enforce this until the court case is settled. That's actually, that's settled law, that can happen, and it happens very often, you know, it's a stay on our law, so.
It'd take five years.
Exactly, so let's say, let's say Rick's scenario takes place, and she somehow declares some sort of gun law, and it gets challenged. Sheriff McKenna, even, this resolution even reaffirms it, can say, okay, we're going to put a, we're going to have a stick on that law, we're not going to enforce that law until the courts tell us to enforce that law. So even with the word lawful, it doesn't change that intent, they can still say, we're going to wait until that happens and it goes through the system. So I want to make it clear, just because we change this doesn't give him any less ability to do that, it doesn't change the way that can happen, it can still happen, that's normally how it happens. If there's a law that is challenged, if there, for instance, the same-sex marriage law is a perfect example, there were clerks that were saying, I'm not going to enforce this until the court cases are done, so everything was put on hold. And then, once the hold was over, and the Supreme Court made a decision, then everyone had to enforce it. Same thing here, and I'm pretty sure, seeing our current Supreme Court, and even looking at, you know, 10, 15 years from now, with the way the Supreme Court is, I don't think we're going to be losing any Second Amendment rights at the Supreme Court level as far as those cases are going. So what I would say is, this does reaffirm, it does allow the sheriff to say, I'm not enforcing this law until the courts take care of it, so the courts have a system in a way, the sheriff still keeps, you know, can keep his men out of danger if there's a really severe law that comes through, and then all the parties, you know, come together and build a, build a unconstitutional law, still allows him to give that freedom to say, we're not enforcing until the courts go through. And it even states that in one of the, in one of the resolved portions of this amendment. So that's all I'm going to say, that's all I'm going to say about this amendment for the rest of the, for the rest of the.
We have a third public speaker.
Since I was referenced so many times, could I speak?
Not normally, don't foul that. I mean, dialogue speaks up any time he feels so good, whether he's in public time or whatever time, he can speak up, but I only have, I have one thing to say about this. And I made a tough decision this morning to have to vote against this, because if the papers don't write it upright, all across this county, I will look like I voted against the Second Amendment. Which you all know in this room, I didn't do that, I'm not going to do that. And you know, this particular resolution was brought to Lapeer County, it actually came down through an email, and it was brought to Lapeer County by Harry Akers and the sheriff. The sheriff brought the original resolution here to Lapeer County. Now, I don't want to put the sheriff on the spot, I'm, I'm going to put the sheriff on the spot, ever, because I think we've got a damn good sheriff, but that's me. So that's, I really had a tough decision to do that. But you all know in this room, I think all of you know, that I stand behind the Second Amendment. I've been a member of Gun Owners of America for 20 years. We've only been around for, I think, 40 or something like that, but I've been a member for 25 years. Been a member of the NRA since the 70s. In fact, I got so many years filled up ahead, I couldn't afford to get a life membership because I think I have a membership now all the way till 1986 or something like that, or even beyond then.
Twenty years.
Yeah, 2086. They're always, they're always called with a deal, you know, we got a deal on this, a deal on that, a deal on...
You're pretty optimistic.
Yeah, so I guess that's the way life is, but, you know, and another issue, and Jan brought it up, and she brought up about 20 years ago, when there used to be a lot of people used to volunteer, there used to be a lot of people used to volunteer for the census, they used to volunteer for seniors, for senior work. Do you know how to the district as big as mine can find a replacement for the signet board? I mean, I've been to every township that I represent, do you think I could find a member, another member? The last one I had on there was out of Wibbly Township, and unfortunately, he was a great guy, he finally passed away. Do you think we could find new people who want to do this volunteering, that's set on any of these? And I, this is throughout every township. Unfortunately, we're running out of people our age. We used to do all the volunteering for most of everything. If you go, if you go to the sportsmanship club, I can't do what I used to do at the sportsmanship club, because of my back and stuff, and the weight crippled me up, but I used to love to shoot skeet, shoot trap, wasn't too good at trap, but I wasn't bad at skeet, but, so you know, I had a tough decision to make this morning, it really put me on the spot. And I don't know, I'm sure Crystal will write it up right, but you know, I'm not so sure some of the other networks will do that. That's, and I, I was against putting those words in there from the very beginning when Mr. Henni and Commissioner Kemp sent me, gave me instructions to set up an ad hoc committee to discuss this. I did that, and we brought that back, didn't we, Brandon? What did we, what was supposed to bring back? The original resolution was supposed to be brought to this board as it was. So we can go back and say this, and this, and this, and the other thing, but if you wanted, just continue to take this back, and we should have done this, we should have done that, probably should have done what you asked me to do in the first place, or we brought it back. You, you know, you were here.
Who was on that ad hoc committee?
Brenda, I, and Rick. You've got to remember, when we did it, it was on, it was on a holiday, it was on Martin Luther King Day, because you guys insisted that I have it back before the next Thursday. I did that. Who did that? You? You did? Yes, he did. Okay. We all voted that. I understand that. There was no, but unfortunately, it didn't get paid attention to. I don't think Lenny was able to put a new knee in.
He would have liked to have done that.
So I want to thank you all again, I don't think we need to say too much more about this today. There are other days, there are other forums coming up, meetings coming up, and everything else, because it is elected, so we'll talk about this, because I need one more moment.
We'll do it, Jerry.